We have two people that have signed up to give a public comment. Let me just quickly review our policy regarding public comment. We, this period shall not exceed 30 minutes. Each individual presentation is limited to two minutes. Speakers will be shown a sign when they have 30 seconds left and a stop sign when their two minutes has ended. Speakers need to be within the Davis School District. Please provide your name and the topic you wish to address if you would please. The public comment period should not be used to air complaints concerning bidding, contracts, employment, or personnel issues, to criticize or defame district employees or board members, or to make complaints for which other avenues for appeal exist. This period can't be used for public comments regarding individual student education issues. You're asked to direct comments to the presiding board member if you would please. Members of the board and superintendent may ask questions of any person upon approval of the presiding board member, and the board is unable by law to deliberate or take action on items raised during the public comment period that is not otherwise on the board agenda. Let's start with Ms. Sarah Johnson if you would please.
Hi, my name is Sarah Johnson. I am here representing myself, no outside groups or organizations, but myself only. I have four children in Davis School District, and I have a vested interest in their well-being as well as the children in my community that grow up alongside of them. I want to thank you for looking into DSD's currently broken procedures with regards to pornographic materials being continually disseminated to our children while they are on taxpayer-funded, government-run, public school property at Davis School District. I know there are many of us who want to work together to make sure that we protect our children from this addictive stimulant that has been shown by countless peer-reviewed studies across NIH to be in the same category as heroin and cocaine. It's been deemed a public health epidemic in our own state, and according to our Attorney General Ray's, Attorney General Sean Ray's, library books in Utah public schools are prohibited if they are pornographic or indecent as defined under one of three provided state statutes. Some of these statutes state that the average person applying contemporary community standards finds that, taken as a whole, it appeals to the purient interest in sex. Another one is that it's patently offensive to prevailing standards in the adult community. I want to establish that this book that I have challenged, and I have challenged it all the way up through the district, and I have been denied my challenge, me along with 25 other parents, were told that this is not allowable to be challenged for another three years.
We appreciate the fact that you've made that sign, but we don't allow signs in the board meeting.
Okay, I'll read it.
I've asked you before when you've come, Ms. Johnson, you can make a public comment what you're doing.
I'm just reading from a book.
I understand.
It has literary and educational value according to the school district.
But as I've told you before, your public comment is not to come and read, is come and tell us how you feel, what you're doing.
Well, I'm telling you how I feel about things that say that my children have access to, that say, "Did you just say books should give me a boner?"
That's your time, Ms. Johnson.
Yes, I did. Are you serious?
Thank you. Denise Wilmore. Denise Wilmore, please.
Good evening, President Robinson, Vice President Stevenson, and Superintendent Newey and board members. I'm Denise Wilmore, speaking on behalf of the Davis Education Association. I wanted to inform you that after our general membership ratification vote, 98% of our members voted in favor of the negotiated agreement. I would like to thank all members of the school board for your support during negotiations and throughout the year. Without a doubt, the last two years have been difficult for educators with the stress of teaching during a pandemic, and you continuously looked for ways to compensate teachers for their heavy lift. In this time of a teacher shortage and high teacher turnover, members of our school board recognize the immediate need to compensate educators adequately. I would like to thank the team who represented Davis Education Association in this year's of negotiations as well as the district team. Their professionalism and collaboration are one of the many things that make Davis an incredible place to work. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wilmore. We're going to move to our information items. We're going to cover one of our committee reports prior to our 6:30 public hearing. Ms. Stevenson, do you want to cover the foundation, please?
Thank you. Yes, let me, since we're jumping around tonight, get to that. Lots of good things happening in Davis School District this last month, busy things and good things. At the Governor's One Utah Summit held on May 10th, the foundation's work with our teen centers was recognized as part of Abby Cox's Show Up Initiative. The participants of the summit packed 1,000 hygiene kits for our teen centers and students in crisis. Also, on May 17th, the HB Boys Corporation presented all students at Fremont Elementary and the students receiving pantry packs at Foxborough a summer punch pass from Burger King for each week of summer. More than 600 students will be impacted by this program. Huge thanks out to that corporation. On May 18th, following day, we honored and named the DSD Teacher of the Year. Huge shout out and thank you to Young Kia and Golden West Credit Union as they awarded a yearly concluding assurance to Mr. Andrew Byrd, the DSD Teacher of the Year. It was incredible morning as we honored one of our very best, did we fail to say what school that was? Woods Cross High, wasn't it? Best of Davis was celebrated on Friday, May 18th, at our Employee Appreciation Night at Lagoon. We thank Hogan Construction and Big West Oil for providing the cash awards for our 45 outstanding educators and employees. Additional thank you to Carrie Capever and Lagoon for making our employee appreciation night incredible evening. It was a great evening, and if you were a part of that, it was so fun. But most of these educators that received awards had also taught and worked that day, but were there with enthusiasm, energy, and such a fun night. More than 5,700 employees and their families attended a fun, festive, and rocky night. And thanks to our principal distraction, entertainment, and John Sirbackham for that. On May 17th and 18th, the foundation had the opportunity to sponsor and support the annual elementary decathlon. It was extra special this year because it included our special needs students to participate. Shout out to Tim Best and Kim Johnson for making this experience happen. May 26th, with the Best of State Awards Gala, the foundation was awarded a Best of State Medal for Community Communications in the Division of Community Development. It was then selected as the overall winner for the community development out of 38 other medal winners who had received awards in the same category. Pretty awesome right there, Jody. The nomination was submitted for the foundation's efforts in raising awareness of students experiencing homelessness in Davis County. The foundation was honored and humbled to have been selected as the winner of the Best of State Statue Award amongst so many other incredible people and organizations. We hope this recognition engages people to join us in this necessary and vital work. Last but not least, do not forget our gala tomorrow night. If you have not already jumped on and started bidding, I am ahead of you, so you better get on and get going. So, it's such a fun event, but yet such a good fundraiser and for such a good cause. So, thanks for all of that. That was a lot going on in May, but appreciated all of them.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. If you'll bear with us, we've got a few minutes before we open this next public hearing.
Well, get out your phones and start bidding. It's right there. Yeah, we know how to get that link.
President Walworth, burning a couple minutes. I just want to reemphasize what Vice President Stevenson just announced about the foundation winning the Best of State Award, and that is that that was a category outside of the educational category. That was across the board, and the Best of State is, you know, it's really a high-level organization in terms of they really dig, and it means a great deal. So, thank you, Ms. Lund, and our foundation and our business community that supports the schools is just awesome. So, thank you.
So, we've got a couple minutes, and then we'll open the hearing. So, again, bear with us.
I was bidding late last night, and somebody kept bidding me as soon as I would, outbidding me as soon as I would bid, and finally, I said to myself, "I think this is something my daughter might be bidding on." So, I called her, and we had both been bidding against each other for the, like, 20 minutes. So, one of us had to step aside, but that's the kind of things that happen.
We'll open the public hearing at this point in time, 6:30 PM. Again, this public hearing is in regards to the final 2021-22 budget and a tentative 2223 budget. Before, we've had one individual sign up. Before I invite her to the podium, I'm going to ask Mr. Carter if he'll just give a brief summary prior to the public hearing comments.
Thank you, President. Yeah, just wanted to take a minute to thank those who've been involved with the process of developing our budget, certainly Mr. Luffel and his team in accounting for finalizing the final legal budget, coming to where we estimate our year-end position will be, which is, you know, a positive position. We'll have some moderate growth in our fund balance. It's always nice to stay in the black, and that will happen again, and for our association and relationship we share with our associations, as Ms. Whitmore already mentioned tonight, with our Teachers Association as well as our Classified Association and the collaboration that we share. So, our budget this year has been posted on our website since the end of May for public review, and it's still there as we speak now. And this budget does not require a tax increase, anything over the certified tax rate, so we will live with that rate. We should have our final certified tax rate within the next few days from the county, and it's a growing budget. It's nearly $680 million in the general fund, so it's a large organization, and we're thankful for the expertise of those who help manage that and put it together. So...
Thank you, Mr. Carter. I'll invite Tammy Long to come to the podium. Ms. Long, you have two minutes.
My main question is, I'd like to know how many of you have taken the open and public meetings trainings? Because right now, according to state's public notice website, you're in violation. There's nothing mentioned whatsoever about this public hearing on the state's website, which according to state code Title 52, you have to do that. So, I'm not here to train you guys. There's people to do that for you. So, get your training.
Thank you, Ms. Long. We'll take what you've told us into consideration here. Ms. Long is the only one that signed up. Is there anybody else in the audience that's here for the public hearing relative to budgets? That ends our public comment as well as our public hearing, so we're going to move on to our remaining part of our agenda. I'm going to turn the time to Superintendent Newey for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President. Board, just want to point out a couple things. It seems in the world of schools, it moves rapidly, so it seems like a long time ago we had graduation. But want to thank the board for your support and participation. I thought it was exceptional with the talks that were given from the board. Great advice, great love shown to our young people and our staff that has worked so hard to get them through to graduation. Really great ceremonies. Wanted to also point out that the total scholarships, and I know that Ms. Hanson sent that to you, but just the amount of $92 million in total scholarships district-wide, and that's really even more critical these days with the high cost of post-secondary education. So, want to commend our students for their work there and emphasize again the board's efforts at creating opportunity for our students. In light of that, just a couple mentions on our National Merit Scholarship winners, Spencer Bringhurst from Farmington High, Berkeley Hammacher from Vumont High School, Kylie Jackman Syracuse High School, Roan Walker Vumont High School, and Kale Gassell Orantes from Woods Cross High is one of 2,500 finalists nationwide for our National Merit Scholars. So, congratulations to all of those students, and again, thank all those that have supported them, particularly their families. Todd Campbell from Woods Cross High, we've had him at board meetings before and has been such a great music educator for us at Woods Cross High, has been recognized as the Utah State Board of Education distinguished awardee for secondary music instruction, and he also received a grant from the Sorensen Legacy Foundation. So, congratulations to Todd and thank him for his work at Woods Cross High. Appreciate Ms. Stevenson, who's already mentioned, Andrew Byrd, our Teacher of the Year, just an outstanding awardee, teaches health science there at Vumont, or Woods Cross, and is with his students for an extended period of time because of the makeup of that class and just does such a phenomenal job. So, thank you, and thank you again, Ms. Lund, and our great partners with Young Chevrolet or the Young Auto Group. Want to move now to recognize a couple of our retirees. Ms. Larson, Julie Larson, would you come to the podium, please? Ms. Larson is retiring as our Special Education Director, and we wanted to honor Julie tonight. Let me just read through where she's been. She started as a teacher at Mura Elementary, then she taught at Woods Cross Elementary, Bolton Elementary, was an administrative intern at Vumont High, assistant principal at North Layton Junior High, assistant principal Bountiful Junior High, elementary principal at Bolton Elementary, elementary principal at Oak Hills Elementary, elementary principal at Layton Elementary, elementary principal at Case Creek Elementary, and then as she is retiring as our Director of Special Education. Julie has had an incredible career. One of the things that I related to a group that met recently, it was kind of a smaller group of her mainly department, and, you know, when I came into the district, one of the things I felt was of paramount importance was that the district moved to be current with our approach to education and give every student the opportunity that education had moved finally to a point where we could have a personalized approach. You know, individualized instruction is nothing new and is certainly what every student and parent desires for their child. But it was difficult until technology has made it more possible and more attainable. With that challenge, Julie took that and let out, and, you know, I can say this because Julie and I are close to the same age, she was not one of our younger principals at that time. She is now, but she wasn't then. And it was just phenomenal to see her make Case Creek Elementary such a model school for education. And she's taken on the role of Special Education Director in turbulent times. We have, and still are close to the top in one of the highest qualifying districts in terms of number of special ed students relative to our population, and that's a challenge. There's huge challenges with IEPs in that every parent wants for their child the very best opportunity, and they deserve it. But it's tough to get that and make everything work, and Julie, you've done that, and we're very grateful. We will miss you, and thank you for all of your service.
We'd like you, if you would, to say whatever you want to say. Well, be careful what you say, but... And introduce your guest, please.
It has been a privilege to work for this district. And it is difficult to leave. I have loved the people that I have worked with, the students that I had the opportunity to rub shoulders with. Every opportunity that I've been given in this district has challenged me beyond what I thought I was capable of doing, and I appreciate the support that I got from people who believed in me and my ability to do the work, and I thank you for that.
Julie, are you leaving any of your boots for...
Her feet are too small.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Next, we have Ms. Janeele Mongole. Janeele, if you would come up, as Janeele's coming up. Janeele started her career as a teacher at Adams Elementary, then she taught at Woods Cross Elementary, was an administrative intern at Woods Cross Elementary, administrative intern at Foxborough-West Bountiful Elementary, administrative intern at Foxborough and Kaysville Elementary, elementary principal at Meadowbrook Elementary, and elementary principal at Eagle Bay Elementary, and has finished and will retire as our Director of Assessment in Davis School District. Janeele is like Julie, someone we will miss greatly. She has taken, you know, one of the things that I think people don't understand about Davis School District is, I'm always amused as superintendent when vendors come and try to sell us stuff, particularly like data people. You know, data assessment and analysis of results is a big business, multi-billion-dollar business, and every time we've met with anyone, we never, the meeting never lasts longer than just a few minutes because they never can do anything for us that Janeele isn't doing already. And she certainly didn't invent it, but she's made it better at every turn. And we are so lucky to have had you, Janeele, and the work you've done. One of the things, again, that makes Davis District and sets Davis District apart is we are a truly data-driven district, and to not have the data, you can't be a data-driven district, and you've made that relevant for all of us, and we're going to miss you, Janeele, and thank you for all of your work.
You take a minute, Janeele, and then introduce your husband.
Thank you. Julie left actual tears on the podium. This is, it's interesting when you look back at a career and it's, it goes so fast, and so 32 and a half years later, here we are, and my thoughts as I've thought about this are just gratitude. When I think about how I want to exit and I feel the excitement of possibilities and the next chapter, I just feel gratitude and just so grateful for the opportunities and challenges that I've been given through the years, and no matter what assignment or what step we find ourselves in, and no matter how much we grow our capacity and face challenges, I think that, for me, and I have to think for all of us, most of us have started out as a teacher, and so whatever that leader heart is as we kind of move up through those assignments and challenges, I think all of us leave with a heart of a teacher, and that's really how I feel is I leave is just treasuring the time that I spent with students. Everything we do, from whatever level to whatever level, is those students drive, all of that energy, all of that action, all of what we do. So, I leave with a grateful heart. I leave with a teacher heart. I want to express my gratitude to you, and I'm just so grateful for the opportunities and growth that I've been afforded in Davis District. It's a wonderful district, and I'm most grateful for the relationships through the years that I'll take with me. Those are treasures, and I'll treasure that, and I'm just grateful for the opportunity I've had to have this body of work for all these years. So, I just leave with gratitude in my heart. Thank you so much. I'm going to introduce my husband, but if you know him, he's just talked to everybody in the room before the meeting even started, so if you... So if you'll come up. This is my husband Marv Mongolee and I'm happy to have him here with me tonight.
Congratulations. We have one other individual that's retiring that we'd like to recognize tonight. That's our Superintendent Reed Newey. We've had an opportunity to, as a, as a board, to work with this gentleman now as he is in his sixth year as a superintendent. Is it six years? Yep. Ms. Tanner, Mr. Eckersley to my right were on the board when he was hired. And others, those of us that joined the board since that time have been very fortunate to join with these two good board members and work with Superintendent Newey. Some people know, but not everyone knows, that he was hired as a teacher and coach at Clearfield High School by a former board member of ours who was the principal at that time at Clearfield High, Ms. Tamara Lowe. And he began a career of teaching and coaching and very quickly went into the administrative route of education. And we had a chance to gather with some of his friends towards the end of the school year. And a good friend of mine, certainly a good friend of Superintendent Newey, is the Superintendent of Weaver District, Mr. Jeff Stevens, who's also retiring this year. But these, these gentlemen are very good friends, but throughout the years as I've worked with Mr. Stevens at the legislative station and crossed paths with him, he, he always asks, how is Reed doing? Has he, has he started to work harder? Because we could, we could never get him to work when he was in Weaver District. We just had a tough time getting him there and he always went home early. Sue, does that sound like the guy you're married to? Hardworking man, he's brought a lot of things to the Davis School District. He hit the ground running right after he got hired and he's, he'll work till the day he goes home. We're very appreciative of what he's done. I can tell you that in his heart, there is a soft spot for kids. And he's a seven-day-a-week guy. It's not unusual for me to get a call on the weekends from him or on a holiday if there's something that has to do with a teacher or teachers or kids. So I'd like to invite all of our board members to join me in front and we'd invite his good wife Sue to come up here. And first of all Superintendent, if you'd like to make a few comments before we do that, we'll just have you do it from there.
Thank you President, Board. You know, I, I love Janeele's and Julie's comments. First of all, this is the best district in the country. And it's because of the people and I've seen them. I've been around. And every one of our directors I consider friends and just the most competent individuals you could ever come across. I appreciate the board. You're all my friends and I love each one of you. Particularly as President mentioned, Julie, you and Gordon for giving me a shot. I still can't get over Gordon offering me the job and I've come to know that it's kind of his personality, but he kind of looked at me like, I think I'm offering you this job. But I've grown to love that look and resolved that in my mind, Gordon. So I just, the board, you all have supported me and we've been in a lot of fights together for kids, the best fights. And I thank you. And I just want to especially thank our superintendancy. Chris, Craig, John, Logan, Dr. Thompson, Jackie has been the most recent addition to that. These people are the finest people I've ever met, ever known. And is what makes them great is they care deeply about what happens in this district and what happens for kids. The loyalest people you could ever know. And I love you, all of you. Most of all Sue, you know Sue's, a lot of people like President alluded to, you know, I, I used, my first job, one of my first jobs was, I was graduate assistant coach at Utah State. I remember we'd go to work when it was dark and enter the Spectrum, that's the stadium, and then we'd come home when it was dark. I didn't know the sun was still around. But you never complained. And she's never once questioned a minute I've spent for this district. And takes care of all our kids and they're great kids and, but I gotta, I love you Sue and thank you.
All right, we're going to move to the second part of the Superintendent Report. I want Superintendent Newey, if you would, please.
Thank you. As we want to move to Dr. Toon, want to update the board as well as make sure that, kind of on record in terms of what we're doing with our library and media, there's a lot of publicity, a lot of news about sensitive materials in schools. We, I, I just want to start by, one, expressing my appreciation for Dr. Toon and the years. This isn't something Dr. Toon and also Ms. Cook are teaching and learning director have started in on since there was the word sensitive materials raised. They've been at this for years and have done an incredible, remarkable, competent job of establishing a policy that addresses learning. Denise, it's all right. We, I want to, I appreciate, I want to thank our, no, no, I want to thank our Education Association while, yes. Our, we have had great support and I specifically have had great support from Denise and Ross and our great association. We love you guys, I love you guys. So thank you for all the work and the support. You guys are fantastic for our teachers and for our district. So thank you. Yes. I had you on my list Denise, but I, I'm glad you interrupted too. Now, as I was saying, this is the, the work Ms. Cook and Dr. Toon and their department has done has been outstanding and is critical for, for learning in our school district. And you know, the, the fights that are going on will be legislated and political as well as at the state board level and we continue to do all we can to support our kids. And we have great competent people fighting that fight. So thank you, Ms. Cook, Dr. Toon. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Dr. Toon.
Thank you Superintendent Newey, President Robinson, Vice President Stevenson, Board for the time. This is intended to just be a quick update on the progress since our last discussion on library media. As you know, our current policy for library media has several aspects of it that are, that are critical for implementation. To our knowledge, we've implemented that policy. Our, our policy with fidelity throughout this current year, the biggest aspect of that and one that I think is critical that our parents understand is that we will honor their request for restriction of any title to their children at any time for any reason without any formal review process or anything like that. We intend to communicate that to all parents during the registration process this coming school year because library media is becoming a, a topic that communities interested in at large. It's being discussed widely. Our, we'll do a little bit of a more parent, a more push to parent information about that particular aspect of our policy as well as other aspects of our policy, including some that may change. As you know, our current policy includes book challenge process for books that are, where a parent can request that a book be removed from a school library. We had several challenges, a few challenges early in the year at the point of our last update and then several challenges later in the year. Thirty-seven different titles were challenged in nine different schools throughout the year. Those challenges came from several parents. Some of those challenges were kind of group challenges where a group of parents submitted the same information regarding a book to a librarian and some of those challenges were individual. The, we haven't completed all those challenges. Each challenge takes a lot of time. The librarian has to convene a committee of educators and parents and community members depending on the school committee structure. And each committee member reads the book in its entirety and then they convene and they're given an opportunity to hear from the, the community member that submitted the challenge. And then the decision is made whether to retain the book or not. Parents can have the opportunity to appeal a decision that is made at the school level, at the district level, and one, the district has received one appeal request. Our current procedures and policy regarding the review process are tied to a legal standard that has been in place for a long time and will now likely, is being discussed and analyzed in light of HB 374 and the Attorney General's guidance, which I'll talk about in just a moment. As a result of the former policy being tied to that legal standard that was prior to HB 374, all of the review processes that have taken place in the schools this, this current year have resulted in the book being retained. And that, that's twenty different review processes across the schools, across the nine schools that have, that have handled those processes. We've received other requests that have not been, that we put them in a queue in order that they're received and so we'll continue with that queue in the fall, assuming that's where the, the policy takes us. In the most recent legislative session and in early May, HB 374 was put into effect. HB 374 defines sensitive materials according to three different legal definitions referring to other areas in state code. We won't go into detail on the legal standards established by 374 right now, but the 374 is, is clearly identifies that information regardless of its setting, whether it's in the classroom or the library, if it's sensitive materials, they're not to be present in our schools. The question that stands ahead of us now is to establish procedures and policies that clearly establish a process for identifying whether materials meet that definition of sensitive materials. And this will be a challenging process. This will be one where we're, there will be some people that look at a, a body of materials and say that it's sensitive and some people that don't. We're going to do that via policy and procedure mechanisms. And the reason we do that is to avoid any individual staff member or librarian or administrator or district person, myself included, promoting their personal perspective on sensitive materials, but rather looking at that legal and policy definition of what that means. Board, this likely, oh, the HB 374 also calls on the State Board of Education to provide a model policy based on consultation with, with legal guidance from the Utah Attorney General's office. In early May, the Attorney General's office sent a memorandum giving guidance regarding HB 374. That memorandum was, was shared with the community at large and then there was some, a request to reconsider that memorandum. And the Attorney General issued a second memorandum and that was issued on June 1st. The second memorandum supersedes some of the direction given in the first and gives a couple of different criterion for determining whether a book or other resource contains sensitive materials. It dives into the legal definition of sensitive materials, notes some of the standards in state law and some of the standards in federal law and, and gives guidance to LEAs on ways to mitigate the risk of litigation regarding federal laws because there's a difference between the standard in federal and, and state regulations. So right now, Board, we're in the, in the period of time where we anticipate forthcoming guidance from the State Board of Education. They will be meeting later this month and the intent of that meeting is to discuss and hopefully distribute very quickly to us a model policy that's based on the legal guidance that we've received. When we receive that legal guidance, I, I believe that we will have a little bit of work to do on our policy. My recommendation, my strong recommendation would be that we follow our established procedures for board policy, which would be the Policy Review Committee convene to identify and discuss those model policies and guidance that we've received, go through our existing policy and identify what they'd like to do. And then we do a, a draft policy that's taken to the Policy Review Committee and then brought to the board on first reading with a period for public input and then brought to the board again on second reading. The intent of the policy review would be to bring our current procedures and policies completely in line with all of the existing state laws and mitigate the risk of litigation, anticipated litigation when book titles are removed and then that decision is challenged as well. So that's the, that's the recommendation. We're, we're in a position now where our hope is to do a lot of that work this summer, but a lot of that will depend on the timing from the state. We don't, I don't want, I wouldn't recommend that we get too far ahead of the policy process, but that rather we do as much as we can within our policy to honor parental requests and individual requests and things like that until the policy is formally and appropriately reviewed in the public forum the way it should be. So that is my update and I don't have any other information unless there's questions.
Sorry, can I ask a question? So when, when you're saying that a parent can request that their student not have access to certain books, if a student then comes to check out that book, it would come up on the computer that you're disbanded from checking this book out, is that how that procedure would work?
That's correct. Thank you.
Having been involved in this in meetings, the, it, it seems from my perspective, and you've, I think summarized it very
I think, summarized it very well tonight, Dr. Toon, is that we're going to follow state law and we're going to follow Utah State Board of Education. And there, as you indicated, and I appreciate the update because both entities, I mean, the Attorney General, as you said, has come out with some clarification on June 1, but now we wait for the State Board of Education. And then, Board, I think with what Dr. Toon has presented, it seems that we follow the procedure we've followed in the past as far as our Policy Review Committee, and we would do that as quickly as we get information. Then we'll convene and bring a recommendation to the Board. I would think unless others have differing opinion that we take that recommendation and follow that procedure. Are we okay there? Good. Anything else, any other questions, any comments? Dr. Toon, thank you very much. We'll go to the Consent Items Board. We have three consent items. Are there any that you need more information on or would like to move to a business item? If not, a motion to approve Consent Items 1, 2, and 3?
I move that we approve Items 1, 2, 3 on Consent Items.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stevenson, second by Ms. Tanner, is to approve Consent Items 1, 2, and 3. Discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That motion passes. We're going to move to our business items. Mr. Carter, shall we deal with that at this point?
Sure. Be happy to, President. So, Board, following the public comment tonight, there was some confusion on the posting of the public hearing. The bond public hearing was posted twice, and the budget public hearing wasn't posted on the 10-day notice. So, I apologize for that. I take responsibility for that. What I'm recommending is that we pull both the final legal and tentative budget action tonight, and we will post another notice for a public hearing in two weeks when we have workshop and have a business meeting at that time to approve both of those, the final legal and tentative budget. So, I apologize for that confusion.
That's great. Do we have to have a motion for that?
Let's have a motion to postpone Items 4 and 5 to our next meeting on...
I move we postpone Items 4 and 5 to our next meeting on June 21.
Twenty-one.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Tanner, second by Ms. Stevenson, is that we postpone Items 4 and 5, which are the final legal budget adoption and then the tenet budget, to our next meeting, which will be June 21st. Discussion on that motion?
I just appreciate that being brought to our attention so we can follow the rules and do that correctly.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Those will be moved to June 21. Ms. Hanson will make a note of that. Let's go back up to Item Number 1, the Board Calendar. Board, for the month of June, July, and August. I did notice, as I looked at the calendar in August, on August 9th and 10th, you'll notice the new educator orientation. I received, I think we might have all received information, that begins at 7:30 and not 8 o'clock, if you want to make a note of that. That's August 9th and 10th. Any other corrections or additions?
I move that we accept the Board Calendar for June, July, and August of 2022.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Mumford, second by Ms. Stevenson, is to approve the Board Calendar for the months June, July, and August. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. I spoke with Dr. Oster today regarding the Head Start and Early Head Start. They've had a great year. They are, again, have things going this summer as they always do, are very appreciative. I know that Ms. Phipps has been actively involved with their policy council this year. We reviewed the report that came to us, the Head Start, Early Head Start Report. I would make a recommendation that we have a motion to approve the Head Start, Early Head Start Report.
I move that we accept the Early Head Start and the Head Start Report.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Ms. Stevenson, second by Ms. Mumford, is to approve the Head Start, Early Head Start Report. Discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That motion passes. Ms. Monali, we invite you to the podium again if you would. Leave your husband there. We've seen enough of him tonight. This is regarding the approval of the 2022, 2023...
He's got a three-year start on me in this retirement thing, so...
Oh.
President Robinson, Vice President Stevenson, Steamboard, and Superintendent Newey. Last time I stood before you, we did our annual training for Community Council, School Board, Land Trust, and then the Land Trust plans were presented for reading, and in that time, we'd like to thank you for your time and care in doing that. I've received some feedback from some of you that will be taken back to the schools and the community councils for consideration. And then, from here, our state also reviews these plans, and I'm sure they'll be finishing up that work this month so that the Land Trust funds can be distributed on time and in a timely manner. So, as I stand here today on this meeting, my purpose is to request approval for the Land Trust plans for the upcoming 2022, 2023 school year.
I move we approve the 2022, 2023 TSSA Land Trust and TSSA plans.
I'll second.
Well, just one clarification, TSSP and TSSA?
TSSP is the goal in the Action Plan part. Land Trust is the money source, and so that's the part we're approving.
Land Trust and TSSA.
And TSSA is the other funding source that is not necessary. Community Council doesn't need to approve that, but it does come before you as the Board.
So, Ms. Tanner's motion is correct. Thank you. And did we get a second?
I did.
So, a motion by Ms. Tanner, second by Ms. Stevenson, is to approve the 2022, 2023 Land Trust and TSSA plans. Comments on that? Mr. Eckersley?
Thank you for all your work and obvious, gosh, these plans have just gotten better and better. I mean, they were good and accomplished a lot before, but with you doing this, they've just really taken off, and I appreciated the plans and the careful consideration that these community councils and principals obviously went into as they put together these plans. Some of them were very detailed, and they had so many things in there, I'm going, oh my goodness, how are they going to remember to do all the things that they have in there? And others were so simple that it was like really focused on one thing that we're going to make a big difference right here. The one question that I have is, especially on those that were so extensive and detailed, what is in place? I don't know if I would call it a follow-up or just to see, you know, how's it coming throughout the year? What do we do to see that they are doing that plan throughout the year and accomplishing what they wanted to?
Thank you for that question. That's one of the main work of the community council. So, as we train, we train our councils and our administration. That should be something that is revisited at every council meeting that they hold, that they should be revisiting that plan. One of the main jobs of the community council is they help implement the plan that they've helped to craft. And so, we ask that at every council meeting, they're reviewing that plan, making sure that it's implemented, making sure that if it can't be carried out the way they've planned due to unforeseen circumstances, that they then make timely changes during the school year so that it's in the best interest of students.
Okay. Thank you.
One of the things, if I could add to that, Mr. Eckersley, is I love Ms. Mongelay's answer in terms of, one of the things with trust lands that is critical is that that community council own those plans and results. But, part of the, again, kind of going back to when we honored Ms. Mongelay, you know, we have a huge data dump that they facilitate regularly into our Power BI program that Dr. Toon has helped develop in that schools know real-time their progress. And, you know, it's so critical because all of that progress is tied specifically to their trust lands and TSSP plans, which is, again, kind of magnifies the importance of data and assessment in that, you know, you just can't find an organization that's more tied to results, that has real-time data to judge those results by. So, it helps everyone to have that at your fingertips, but also then that's got to be continually revisited by the community councils.
Thank you.
Other comments? Ms. Tanner?
Yeah. It just gets easier and easier every year. I can remember eight years ago, everything was handwritten, and it's, the template is just more and more efficient. It's really been helpful. We appreciate that. And we so appreciate these monies that we get from the state that allow schools to personalize at least a small portion of money of where they want to focus on and what they want to improve. I just had one term that I didn't recognize as I was reading through the plans. It was called, at Kaysville Junior High, they were, some of their money was going to an integrated education therapist, and I just wondered what that role would perform.
So, integrated learning specialist, and at this particular school, that can take on several ways of making that work. But at Kaysville Junior, their particular direction with that is to hire personnel, and my understanding in this specific case is that they have hired a licensed therapist, and they are sharing that cost with Davis High School. And so, that person will go between Kaysville Junior and Davis High School. The main purpose there is to work integrated with curriculum under the direction of administration and largely be available for students with social, emotional learning and specific things in that area in conjunction with their curriculum.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say how much easier it is over the last couple of years to go back and do this. The template is a beautiful form. The 26 schools I did, every one of them, you could just tell the time that they had put into prioritizing and making good use of this money. So, I appreciate, appreciate all those that have been involved.
Yeah. Just quickly, I think the user-friendly feature is a great attribute for principals and councils. There's so many great innovative ideas that I saw in these plans, so I hope there's a lot of cross-collaboration as people are looking at what other schools are using. It's kind of a great chance for schools to experiment a little bit with this extra source of revenue that comes from trust lands focused on academic improvement, and so we're seeing some really great things come out of that. So, thank you.
Board, the motion is to approve the 2022, 2023 Land Trust and TSSA plans. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
We're going to move to Item 6, the North Layton Junior High Kitchen Remodel. We'll turn the time to Mr. Carter.
Thank you, President. So, before you tonight, Board, is a request to approve a significant remodel to the kitchen of North Layton Junior High. It would include a walk-in refrigerator and freezer as well as updated equipment to handle the cook-and-shield process in place in the district. The question was raised, you know, if we do rebuild North Lane at some point in the future or down the road, what do we do with this equipment? And oftentimes, if we have equipment that's still usable and we rebuild a school or do a major remodel, we'll pull it and use it elsewhere. And that, given that we're probably anywhere from five to 10 years away of either a major remodel or rebuild of this school, we feel as still warranted to go ahead with this remodel and get this kitchen up to date for those kids. And so, it's our recommendation that this award be given to Bailey Builders, Inc. in the amount of $1,897,859.
I move that we approve Bailey Builders Incorporated for $1,897,859 for the remodel of the Layton, North Layton Junior High Kitchen.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Eckersley, second by Ms. Tanner, is to award the bid for the North Layton Junior High Kitchen remodel to Bailey Builders for the amount of $1,897,859. Discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Mr. Carter, let's go to Item 7, the Catalyst Center Pole Barn. Mr. Carter, please.
Yes, thank you. So, our CTE program is repurposing their home building program from actually building homes out in neighborhoods and selling them to building mini homes, which are quite popular apparently. But with the cost of lots and the availability of lots and the cost of construction, our home building program is becoming really difficult to sustain. So, what we're recommending here is that just to the west of the Catalyst Center, we will erect a pole barn, which is a fairly economical building to make with a lot of space inside that will allow the students from all over the district to come and participate in the building program of these mini homes. And so, it's our recommendation that that be, that bid be awarded to Roper Buildings in the amount of $143,658.
I move that we, I move that we approve Roper Buildings to install the pole barn at the Catalyst Center in the amount of $143,658.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Eckersley, second by Ms. Stevenson, is to award to Roper Buildings the contract for the building of the pole barn at the Catalyst Center for the amount of $143,658. Discussion, Ms. Mumford?
Yeah, I just want to express my appreciation to our CTE department. I think this is the first of many great expansion opportunities at the Catalyst Center, and it also represents several years' worth of work in the construction pathways. I think it's a great opportunity to make that program more accessible to students across the district. It compresses their learning into a really unique experience as they craft one of these tiny homes and see the entire process happening. So, I really appreciate the change that we're making in the district. I think it's smart economically, and it's a benefit to our kids.
Mr. Eckersley?
Appreciate the foresight to purchase that land next to the Catalyst Center, and we're already starting to use it. My question would be, do we foresee this pole barn being something that will be there for several years in the future that we'll be using that? Is it temporary and could be replaced someday by a more permanent building?
Well, I actually kind of researched what a pole barn is because I didn't know, but it's a very permanent building and it's kind of a unique design. It's been around for a number of years. It just, we anticipate that will be there for quite a while. From the exterior, you won't think it's anything but a normal, regular building. It's just that the poles on the exterior that support it are sunk anywhere from four to six feet into the ground to disperse the load, and it's really quite ingenious. So, it's an economical and a very legitimate process to construct a large space that they need, obviously, for this process.
Okay. Thank you.
The motion, Board, is to award the contract to build the pole barn at the Catalyst Center to Roper Buildings for the amount of $143,658. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes.
President, if I could just add one comment on the heels of that, and it's kind of want to thank you to our construction partners. And Ms. Mumford certainly wasn't, didn't plan this or anything, but I think it's important... And Ms. Mumford certainly wasn't, didn't plan this or anything, but I think it's important to note a couple of things. And one of the things, kind of a challenge to Dr. Linford in terms of continuing the work that he's already done, obviously, with this tiny homes work, and our construction partners are incredibly unique in Davis School District in that we have, in our district, three of the four, five top, really in the West, construction companies. And they're all incredibly invested in our kids. For instance, me and Ms. Mumford specifically have talked several times about not only the work that Hughes and Hogan does and their great support, but also Oakland at their development of a great internship experience for students. And sometimes those things are tough to, it takes a lot of energy to keep going. But I would just challenge the Board, I appreciate Mr. Eckersley's comments, to keep their eye on the ball of our partners and continue to support and put energy into construction because it's so, such a lifeblood of the county and so needed for sustained way of life. And our partners need our continued support, both our energy and our focus in all the ways that we give it. But I would, like Mr. Eckersley talked about, great foresight by Mr. Lefell, Mr. Carter to secure additional land to free up money. I know Dr. Linford's already taken a group and looked at different options and to expand. Dr. Toon's always on it. But we've got to support our partners at these internship opportunities because they are tremendous. We can't ask for better partners in our construction industry. And, you know, Ms. Lunt has such a great relationship with them, so I would just encourage that energy, keep pushing, to support the great work that our partners are doing because it's significant.
Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Nofriel, can we invite you to the podium, please? We're going to go on the second and final reading of Policy 2H-R-301.
Thank you, President, Superintendent, members of the Board. The Board will recall last month's presentation. We talked about the exit survey policy, which is when teachers are surveyed on their way out of the district. The change here is, the only thing we called out last time was that we changed 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3, instead of reading Human Resources, it says the district now. Other than that, this copy reads just like the last one. We recommend that you pass it on final reading.
I...
Go ahead.
I move that we approve Policy 2H-R-301 Educator Exit and Engagement Survey on a second and final reading.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Mumford, second by Ms. Stevenson, is to approve Policy 2H-R-301 Educator Exit and Engagement Surveys on a second and final reading. Discussion on that motion? Mr. Eckersley?
I just think this is an excellent practice to have, to have an exit interview like that, and grateful that we're still looking at it and looking to improve what we already do.
President, and just to remind the Board, this hasn't changed our practice, this has been our practice, it's just now in policy.
Thank you. All in favor of approving Policy 2H-R-301 Educator Exit and Engagement Survey on a second and final reading, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes, thanks, Mr. Nofriel. We'll move to Board reports. Ms. Mumford, anything?
Not tonight.
Ms. Stevenson?
Just to say how much I enjoyed graduations. It's so amazing to think how many of our students graduated with an associate degree. It was unbelievable in every school. I thought the millions of dollars saved by parents as those kids graduated with that. Also, our student speakers could not have been better. They were amazing, and what wonderful kids we have here in Davis School District. And I've already spoken on Teacher Appreciation Day, but the word that went in by the foundation for that, at Lagoon, and thanks to Terry and all of Lagoon for providing that. But what a good time the families had, and then recognizing 45 of our best, but we could have recognized hundreds because we have such good people here in this district, so.
Thank you. Just to add to the graduation, just another comment about the quality of student speakers, but I would also just mention our secondary directors, along with the high school principals, the ones I went to, and I'm assuming that this is the case with all of our graduations, just went off without a hitch. A lot of work goes into it, and we just kind of show up, and it just happens, and very appreciative. And in our communities, at least in my community, and I think probably all of our communities, a lot of very positive comments about the quality of that graduations. Ms. Tanner?
Pass. I couldn't think of the right word.
Mr. Eckersley?
Just want to echo what you said about graduations, really enjoyed the graduations that I was able to go to, and I also very much appreciated the student participation and what they were able to do. It really is all about the students and what they have accomplished over their last 13 years in school, and to see them there, to see them performing, to see them speaking, to see them celebrating. I think I love that more than anything, is to watch the celebrations that they do and that their parents do. Some parents act like they're a little surprised, I'm not sure what that's all about. But the graduations are great. Also, since last time, been to an adult, the adult high school that we have in the Great Service that is to our community members, and the graduation for that high school will be on June 23 at 11:00 at the Layton Auditorium.
Thank you, Mr. Eckersley. Board, that brings us to the conclusion of our meeting. We need to go to close session this evening for the purpose of personnel and property.
I move that we go to close the meeting for the purpose of personnel and property. I'll second that motion.
Motion by Ms. Stevenson, second by Ms. Mumford, to go to close session for personnel and property, and that meeting will be in the boardroom. Roll call vote, Ms. Mumford?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Tanner?
Yes.
And Mr. Eckersley?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you all for being with us.